We pulled up on the Internet, and Mr. Carpenter, I'm thinking about it. I apologize for these changes. We didn't know they were going to occur and change all the hard work that you did on this. But the so-called definition or explanation for workforce housing is a term that is increasingly used by government and organizations concerned with housing policies or advocacy. The term is gaining respect and admiration with realtors, developers, and lenders. Workforce housing can refer to any form of housing, including ownership of single or multiple family homes as well as occupation of rental units. Workforce housing is generally understood to mean affordable housing, a household with earned income that is insufficient to secure quality housing in reasonable proximity to the workplace. Okay? So it coincides with affordable housing, but the new term is workforce housing.
Can you do that last sentence again, please?
Workforce housing is generally understood to mean affordable housing. Now, this is not anything that I know that is a legal definition. This is what I read on the Internet that has been explained out there. Workforce housing is generally understood to mean affordable housing or households with earned income that is insufficient to secure quality housing in reasonable proximity to the workplace.
Three bad.
Well, that's what it is. And that's what everybody's been going by. If somebody can come up with something better, I'm willing to listen.
Just so everybody knows what you're talking about, Andy, what my thought was, there was 55 and over was already in the ordinance. We were going to take that out for workforce in. But when I thought about it a little bit, the thing that concerned me, if something happens and this lady don't get funded and it falls through, and five months down the road, somebody comes along and say, "I want to do 55 and over." We took it out, and now we've got to do it all over. We already had it in there.
Correct.
So I just mentioned it might be a good idea to leave it.
But the wording at this time, it says it's for older persons. I don't know if older persons is defined or not. So at 55 and over would define that. Dan?
If you do both of them, not, there are people over 55 and are older who need housing that may not be part of the workforce. So we still want to keep some housing available for them. So could we leave the workforce, workforce housing and elderly?
We could do that, but the definition that we would propose would also include affordable housing. It would not necessarily mean that somebody had to be working, to me.
If they're not working, how is it workforce?
Wait a minute. You have an explanation for that?
Well, what I, what I want is, do we have Jen on the phone yet?
Not yet.
What I wanted to know, what I downloaded from the Virginia Housing site was a chart under the workforce housing loan program, mixed income and mixed use. Mixed income, mixed use, mixed income. My question would be, would be new workforce housing options allowed to 80% of units with unrestricted incomes. My question to her would be, on the backside of that, the second page, it looks to me like you could choose a workforce where you would have 20% of income less than the 80% that we talked about. The rest of them, the 20%, and then 80% would be unrestricted. And you could choose a workforce 40-60, which seems that 60, 40% would be income less than 60% would be unrestricted. Or workforce 100, where they would all have to be, all the residents applying, would be 150 of the amount. I just would like to know what her, how she's planning to present this, because it does make a lot of difference, and it would help me to understand whether or not I want, what I want to keep in here. I understand about the workforce and the, the older folks, because if it's strictly workforce, then, I don't know if Bill knows this, or if we need to call her and find out what, clarify that for us, because I know nothing.
I talked to her today. And if you, Mr. Moss, if you don't mic up, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
If we're on the same page, maybe. So this came to our attention, I guess, a month ago, Ms. Server, Mr. Gentry, that wasn't me, Mr. Weaver. And we talked about this site. We know it has a history, and I think it was January 2009, they took off the senior housing. They had went through a rezoning, was it 2018, and limited the site to senior housing. So I guess the folks who analyzed the potential development of site as senior housing pretty much came back to the conclusion, though it's a, probably would be a big part of any kind of housing project there. Housing development, apartments, it alone couldn't carry the project, and it really didn't make it feasible. So they came with the idea of, working with Ms. Server, who has a, you know, a really impressive background in developing these projects, would it be something the county would be interested in? In general, the project. And the way I look at it is there's sort of three options. One is, it is zoned, a high-density residential, R3. You know, you could say, "Look, develop it by where the code is right now, and, you know, bring your site plans in." But if we did that, then their project pretty much wouldn't work. But that is one option. Another option is to amend the code and, in a fashion that allows, it already does allow for senior houses to have larger buildings. It's not really a density increase. What we're really asking for is a larger structure. Density-wise, it really, really, it would be a consistent what's allowable now. But as, as Ms. Server has said, it's easier to go up than go out. And you start going to multiple buildings, your expenses go up, and it makes the project just, you know, not feasible. The third option is to add just apartments as special use. So when we talked about it, we had two really good work sessions on this, workshops. And when we left, I guess, last week, the consensus was that we would amend the code, make it by right, and we would add affordable housing as a, instead of just being for older, older populations, it would also be affordable. So if you were affordable, you would be able to do a 60-unit, single building. Or if it was for, for older, senior populations. And we came up with a definition for affordable housing. Affordable housing is housing intended for sale or rent to persons or families earning 80% or less the median area income. That's a term by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. She's using that definition, the tax credit program that she's applying for, that's, that is what it, that's, that's what she's applying for, and it's saying, that definition is pretty much, the way I understand it, is what the tax credit program is all about. Housing intended for sale or rent to persons or families earning 80% or less of the area median income. So now, it sounds like we kind of maybe thought about, you know, words do make difference sometimes, how people perceive these things. Affordable is now sort of, in the last meeting, we thought of using workforce. That's fine. That's a fine definition to use. So if you just want to amend the code, I would say, just take affordable, swap it with workforce, and then on the definition, instead of being affordable, leave the same, leave the same definition, very simple, straightforward. That is the, that is the program she's using. Instead of using affordable, make it workforce housing, and use the same definition. And you could also just leave in, for affordable housing, instead of saying for older persons, which is kind of vague, just say, "or senior housing." And just add a definition that says senior housing is restricted exclusively to people 55 and older. Yes, ma'am?
But my question would be to her, unless you know Bill, do you know how she's going to be applying with the options that they give for the loans, for workouts?
I'd best to get it directly from Jen.
That's, I mean, it does make a difference.
Mr. Shetrin?
It's best that Jen speaks directly for the type of decisions she's making in this typical situation. I don't want to step into that.
Yeah, and I asked her today, does, does the affordable housing definition, whether we call it affordable housing or workforce housing, is that the working definition that describes the credit? She said yes.
What, Mike, what did she tell you?
She just said that the program that they are working under is the workforce housing program. And something that we got a couple of weeks ago, they said this so-called 55-year-old or whatever, elderly tenant targeting thing was not going to work for them. So this is workforce housing and/or affordable, plus a thing, affordable care, the other definition that we were using, one and the same, as far as I'm concerned?
It's not exclusive to 55 and older. You will have 55 and older people that...
Will qualify.
Absolutely.
They will qualify anyway, if that's where they...
Workforce housing and/or senior housing, or what do you want to call it?
I just need, I won't be able to vote until I hear from her.
Mr. Webber?
You say that affordable housing, workforce housing are one of the same. Where do you get that?
That is, I pulled that off of the Internet, where they're talking about the workforce housing loan program. And it goes, it talks about workforce housing and what it is. And then he said, "It's generally, workforce housing is generally understood to mean affordable housing for households with earned income," et cetera, et cetera. Okay?
Does affordable housing describe much better than workforce housing? What it is we're trying to accomplish?
We, it could. It could.
Yeah, I do believe either term is fine. I mean, you know, we can call Jen, I just want to make sure that we know exactly what we're asking.
My, my concern is, we don't want to make, make a mistake on this very first step to not use all the terms or any of the terms that she will be working under.
But we're amending our code, so...
But our code has, needs to reflect whatever we're going to get in.
And what she's doing...
Otherwise, it might not fit.
Right. And her credit is for the, is this 80% of median annual income. That is the program.
Right.
That is the tax credit.
Well, I think, I want to hear from her.
That it restricted to that.
But is that, Mike, is that, is what they can just describe different from what you heard from...
No. I don't think so.
Why would we not want to use the term affordable housing?
That is up for debate tonight, as far as I'm concerned. It's one and the same, but one of the, the ongoing word these days is workforce housing is, is a, is a better term than affordable housing. And that's the, that's what's being said out on the Internet. That's all.
Not for us to decide?
Do I?
Isn't it for us to decide?
Not if we want to...
I mean, can you decide what's the best term for it?
That's what we're here for tonight. Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah. My question is, I can define the enabling legislation for affordable housing, but I couldn't find anything for workforce housing. Do you know if there is something? I mean, that's a generic term, workforce housing. Internet says, Wikipedia says it's affordable housing.
Right.
And there are, all over the state, there are workforce housing projects, which generally are for literally working people, teachers, firemen, police, and things like that. So I couldn't find any enabling legislation for affordable housing.
Okay. I would like to... Yeah, I think if our definition, as long as our definition is the program she's working for, whether we call it affordable or workforce, my feeling is we're okay. We're saying that this workforce housing, that's 80% of, you know, median income or whatever, is by right. I think we're okay. But we can call, why don't we just call Jen up now, put her on speakerphone and...
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Wait a minute, wait a minute. And I'll wait.
Mr. Ollie? I, I think that we're not staying on track with one here. I think the thing in front of us is, we want to let 60 units be in one building. I don't think at this point, we can ask her or know at this point, how many houses are going to be for who and how are they going to be for. I think what's in front of us and what we've got to decide, what are we going to call it, and are we going to allow 60 units? I think that's what we are looking at here, rather than looking at who she's going to let move in it right now. Not to contradict what you're saying, babe, but that's where we should be looking at, what we should be working on.
I think that pretty well sums it up. Mr. Ollie, that's what we're looking at here, is to amend the ordinance to allow certain type of housing up to a maximum of 60 units on R3 property. Now, as far as what happens after that, would be, I think, something a little different. Now, whether you want to vote on it now or not, or wait until you hear more clarity, I don't know. But I think he is right, that that's what we're looking at. Are we going to amend this ordinance to allow workforce housing or affordable housing on R3 for 60 units? And that's what we're here to decide. Francois?
This question, may I reiterate, is will 100% of the residents be below 80% area median income, or will it be under another program where it's only 20% of them that are below 80% or, and the rest is unrestricted? What is the, when, what will the mix be?
Yeah. My feeling is, in order to qualify, I mean, we can ask her, but in order to qualify to get a rental, to secure a unit, we have to show that your income is, because again, is 80% or less for the area median income. So if you were more, you wouldn't, you wouldn't qualify. And then, then your rent's going to be based on, you know, your income. It's going to slide. So that's why it goes from 300, maybe 1,100, depending on your, you could be at 80%. And maybe at 80%, your rent is 900. 20%, maybe 40%, then your rent is 300, so...
No, I understand that, but will there be any residents there whose income will be, will be higher than...
I don't, I don't believe so. They can ask.
The program is pretty clear on what it allows, and that doesn't sound like that...
Not according to that piece of paper.
No.
Yeah. I can share the website on the Virginia Housing website.
Which is the only place that we do have any, said, workforce housing. Is that website?
It just basically is affordable.
There is enabling legislation for affordable housing. I think, Peter, didn't you say that affordable housing is the terminology in the competency class? Last meeting, you mentioned.
Okay. Forward. Mr. Carpenter, were you referring to the PHDA website in terms of the definition for workforce housing? I did find some reference to it.
Yes, and the code is 15.2-2305.
Make a turn following.
Yeah, and it enables, I look out, it's got these three pages of things. The 80%, I think, was based on what she told us the first time.
Okay.
Do we have her on?
Want me to call her?
Absolutely.
You want to call Jen?
Yes. Question, are we admitting an ordinance or working on a basis of...
Amending the ordinance. Allowing, recommending.
Yes, yeah. But why are, why are we always specificing on a basis? Going back to Pete's comment on whether or not 60 units in a building, we shouldn't be making ordinances based on individual applications.
I agree.
The idea of doing that seems to be, it seems to be something that you've got in trouble, or not in trouble, but it seems to be a bad way to look at it.
No?
One foot.
Okay. Do you have her online?
Here we do.
Okay.
Hello, Jen?
Yes, sir.
So we're just having a little bit of a conversation, you know, the last meeting, we had talked about making this affordable housing as a, as a use by right, and also defining it. And I know a colleague just sat in and talked about that, that little definition saying, you know, housing intended for sale or rent for person or families earning 80% or less their median income. I guess there's been some conversations that maybe the term workforce housing is maybe more palatable with some people. But we still, we keep it the same definition. And you have a lot more experience working with this program. We don't want to change it to something that disqualifies your project. What, if you follow what I'm saying, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, just that, you know, what, what we are intending to provide is both workforce housing and affordable housing, but the definition that you just correctly adequately and correctly defined and described are intentional.
So whether we call it workforce housing or affordable housing, that, that's what you're doing, that 80%?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
It's 100% or maybe...
And 100%, everyone who lives in this, potentially in a, in a workforce or affordable unit, have to meet that criteria of 80%, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That settles it.
Okay. Going back where we started last week, and why Mr. Carpenter wrote up. If we're not going to put in the word affordable housing, we're going to stick, I mean, workforce housing, we're going to stick with affordable housing. The only thing that was, that's what Mr. Carpenter drafted up and what we're going to recommend, is that we were going to add or housing for persons 55 or older. Does everybody follow that? The only thing we're going, we're pointing...
Why would...
They got something to say down there?
My, my com, my comment, if, comment is on that, I agree, affordable probably will work. And workforce housing seems to be what we're dealing with also. I'm thinking we ought to open it to what, to all the definitions that we can use. I don't know. If affordable will work, that's fine. And as far, may I make another comment about what was said about the amendment, meant about the ordinance and changing them? Or not? That's not appropriate. Now, I'll wait on that. Keep it to this.
Okay. At this time, what I'm hearing, Mr. Planning Commission is going to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, an amendment to this ordinance, where we're going to take out affordable housing, we're going to leave in affordable housing, or we're going to change the housing for older persons or whatever, we're going to change that to affordable housing. And the draft that Mr. Carpenter made up, we were going to add in there, or housing for persons 55 or older. And that would be, the workforce housing issue would be not, would not be there. Okay? Does everybody follow that? So the way, the proposed amendment would read, okay, I know this is confusing, because there's been a couple of different versions of this thing floating around. I'm reading on what Steve Carpenter drafted up.
This is right here. That actually, that's right behind my report, the zoning map. There's a zoning map of R3 on the next stage.
It says ordinance 2020, that's a question?
That's right.
All on the same page now? Okay. It's my understanding that this time, what we're going to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, amendment to Article 7-3.3. Which would now read, or presently reads, said, "No more than eight townhouses or attached dwelling units shall be included in any one grouping, and no more than eight dwelling units shall be included with any multiple-family dwelling, except," we're going to add affordable housing, and we're going to take out for older persons, "not exceeding 60 dwelling units may be included with multiple-family dwellings." And then we're going to say, "The maximum frontal length of any building or structure in this zone shall not exceed 200 feet, except for maximum frontal length shall not apply to multiple-family dwellings used as affordable housing," period. Hey, that's the proposal at this time. That's what I'm hearing. The majority of the planning commission is supporting. Yes, okay. I'm sorry. Yes, we were going to add in or 55 and older.
Lincoln had it right on the money a while ago, the couple of words that he said...
I mean, senior housing, and then just do a definition, senior housing, 55 or plus is restricted, just 55 or plus.
Or senior...
It's not, or affordable housing, it should say and/or senior housing.
Right, so except, so go back to the middle, where it says, "Except affordable housing and/or senior housing, not exceeding 60 dwelling units may be included in multiple-family dwelling." At the very end, of, you know, just read the vast link, "Shall not apply to multiple-family dwellings," it uses affordable housing and/or senior housing. Just add a very simple definition for senior housing, say, restricted to 55 or plus.
Okay, so we, do we need two definitions, one for affordable housing, one for senior housing?
That's right. We'll just make it very simple, it's 55, it's restricted to persons 55 or older.
Okay, everybody on board with that?
I don't know. I think we're fighting a losing battle.
I don't, I don't want to wait next, next week and get a lot of other proposals to change all this, so we need to try to get together now. The clock is running. Yes, Francois?
Why don't you do workforce housing?
Because that just confuses things even more. If we're going to call it affordable housing, my proposal would be to call it affordable housing. And apparently, Miss, the applicant here, or the developer, has no problem with that.
Might be more valid.
Okay. Anybody else? Dan?
I think in somewhere, when it talked about the definition of senior housing, there, it said at least one of the persons is over 55, that when you come up with your definition, you have a 75-year-old whose 45-year-old child needs to live with them.
Yeah, I was thinking, just thinking of that. We'll make it where it's at least one resident is that age, and if there's...
It may already be...
Now, so, if that's our definition, you know, if one person's 55, the developer can restrict it even further, you know, on, you know, with their own covenants. But we would say, that's, I think that's a good point. You could say at least one person has to be 55. If the developer wants to restrict it more, then that's fine.
Okay. I think we thoroughly beat this up tonight. I think we now have a consensus on exactly how we're going to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to amend this ordinance.
And that'd be, and the definition for senior housing would be 20-5C. 20-167B.
About a quarter.
So this one would be C, for senior housing.
20-167B.
Because B would be affordable housing.
20-167.
Oh, seven? Okay.
Okay, based on the conversation, Mr. Webb, are you going to draft something up? Or you want us to do that?
Oh, I'll, I'll do it and send it to everybody, but I think we've got...
All right. So we're all on board now?
Send this back to the board, and they can have a discussion about it.
Okay. And we don't need to have another workshop meeting on this?
Well, we will meet in the middle of September, preview of the meeting.
I mean, at the workshop, absolutely. But we don't need anything in between. Okay.
Does that still need our time line, before we have my hearing and all that?
Oh, yes, yeah. I'll have it in the next few... Oh, yes, yeah, I'll, I'll have it in the next few minutes.
Can you advertise, because the ordinance decided tonight, can they make a decision? We need to make a motion to recommend to the attorney.
We, we have heard the discussion. I'd like to hear your opinion. Are we allowed to talk about it right now? Is everybody okay with this? Do we have further discussion? Back to you.
The big picture is, I guess the big picture for the board is you're okay with changes to make it by right. That, that's okay. Everybody, everybody okay with it?
Yes.
Back to you. Keep going.
Okay. Mr. Webb, you have one other comment?
The only comment I have, like, I think the, on the planning commission, we have a consensus. If you could get the language out early enough before the meeting, so if we have issues with it, we can get those cleared up before the meeting, that would be very helpful.
I'll set it up tomorrow. Thank you.
Pretty quick, every ten minutes.
I have a question.
Yes.
A dumb one. Seven dash three dash three, and then you're talking about twenty, y'all was arguing about twenty dash something, no loss.
Definitions, Article twenty.
Oh, okay. All right. So, but we are voting on seven dash three dash three, right?
That's what would be, the board would be voting on, and may be recommending amendments to that. And new definitions.
So you're, you're amending one existing part of the ordinance, and you're adding two new definitions.
Okay. All right, we know where we're going from here, right? Okay. The next item is a potential ordinance amendment for minimum off-street parking, Article fourteen nine and fourteen nine dash eight, open space definition, Article twenty dash one thirty-three. This off-street parking issue had been bounced around for a while. Faye was gracious enough to write that up. All it is, is a housekeeping thing. When we did outdoor event venues, we did not have any parking requirements for those. We have parking requirements for any other, all other type businesses in the county which are predominantly indoor businesses. This is an outdoor business, and there was no parking requirements or stipulation on those. So that's what this is about. Faye, do you have anything you want to add to that explanation?
Only that I, to add the, oh, I lost it. To add the part about the outdoor event venues without exceeding adequate parking for customers and visitors and staff members or owner, parking on public roads and their right of way is prohibited. That came from our Sheriff Weaver, who said, his deputies, that would make it a lot easier for them to enforce. Anything that happened in, and the committee, when we met some months ago, felt that we needed to address that as, because of the, reducing the size of an event venue to ten acres, had become more critical. It's to where they might be located, along small roads, secondary roads.
Okay, that would be fourteen nine, minimum off-street parking would add, or for outdoor event venues, that would be an addition, that would be the only addition to that particular article. And then the other article, fourteen nine dash eight, would be adding event venues, which wasn't added previously, along with other type of businesses, church or school, auditoriums, regators, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? And it would be specifically a statement which says for outdoor event venues, if you're following, for outdoor event venues without exceeding, without exceeding, there shall be provided adequate parking for customers, visitors, and staff members or owners. Parking on public roads and the right of way is prohibited, as Faye said, that the sheriff would recommend. That is a pretty clear cut proposal. If I have any issues with that, if not, it's going to be forwarded to the board. Mr. Webb?
Yeah, and, and this is really a net, but I did raise it the last time we discussed this. I, I think the word adequate is a very subjective term. And if I'm remembering it, paying you neighbor with the better, I think I suggested the word sufficient, which is also a subjective term, but frankly, it's a little bit less subjective.
What was the word? Sufficient? Anybody have any problem with that change? Sufficient?
Chairman, I believe the issue is going to be enforcement, and I think that either word sufficient for the sheriff to enforce, because what it's going to come down to is if there's not sufficient parking on the location site, people are going to kind of park on the road shoulder, that's when the sheriff is going to take appropriate action.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
Sufficient is fine with me. How about you?
Okay. We will substitute in our proposal the word sufficient. Any other comments on that proposed recommendation?
I think that does it.
Okay, moving on, the next item on our agenda is potential ordinance amendment. Okay, no got that, no got that? No, we're good. Mr. Webb has something about a grandfather.
Open spaces.
Article twenty dash one thirty-three, thank you Faye, definition of open spaces. Okay. If you go to twenty dash one thirty-three in the ordinance on Article twenty, it gives you a definition of open spaces, but it doesn't include croplands, I think was the problem with that. And this would include cropland as part of the open spaces, am I correct on that Faye?
Yes, it may be. Right now, like in our event venue, it says fifty percent has to be open space. That includes for the ten acre event venue.
Yes.
Five acres of open space, that seemed, when the committee met, we thought that was kind of excessive, and we talked about, what, what does undisturbed mean? Undisturbed to me means it's not farmed, it's not anything. The only thing you can do on it is landscaped area, unoccupied, by building streets or parking lots. So your parking lot can't be part of it. And if we expand it to where it may be used for cropland, because it's all in a, it's all in a one, you can at least not have fifty percent of five acres, say, sitting there, not being used for anything.
Does everybody understand what, what the proposal here is? Just add, as far as open land, be cropland would be considered open land?
And in the special use permit, you would need the setbacks, so you could establish those then, as opposed, you want the cropland to be.
So this, we would not have a, in the definition, there would not be a statement about setbacks?
Not necessarily.
Thank you. Okay. Any problem with that recommendation?
None whatsoever, but I will say that, say cropland, if somebody cuts a forest, you know, we're going to leap into that, cropland and forest land? I mean.
I just.
You say the undisturbed, I, I don't know anything on the seven hundred acres we owned that wasn't undisturbed at one point.
Okay, if trees in Madison County is considered a crop, I can testify that, because I just had forty-five acres cut, timbered, and that's going to be replanted, just like you would a, a, a corn in a field that you harvest one year, you replant it next spring, so, cropland.
It's fine with me, I'm just, I agree, I'm agreeing with you, but, you know, we, we like to cut and paste in here, so, all right, I, I think that we should have this as, cropland should be open space, I agree one hundred percent.
Okay. All right, so everybody was.
I just didn't want somebody to want to say trees was different.
Okay, so everybody's on board with that, just small amendment, proposed, okay?
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Both of those will need to go to the public hearing.
They will, and they will have to be advertised.
All one, all together.
Put those together for that.
Mr. Moscow, you might want to get a motion passed by the planning commission, if that's what you're doing right now.
Well, I didn't, we.
Are we still in the discussion stage?
We're, we're, never mind, okay.
Do they, do they have to make a motion to pass it, so it would be advertised and then it would be given to the public hearing, they made the recommendation?
That was my understanding.
Are, are we the ones that have to put it in front, or are we the ones that have to put it into the public hearing?
Yes, it would be advertised presumably by both groups, I think traditionally that's what it is.
So, so I understand, at that time, I said this the way I.
I, I would look, because we don't have to make those. If, if forests.
We took the public hearing.
The planning commission has made a unanimous nod, saying that we should have a public hearing, or would like to have some discussion on this. Are we all good on this? If everybody's good up here, let's go to a public hearing.
Okay, but after public hearing.
Then you all need to make recommendations, but it will be a joint public hearing.
Yes. Okay. I think that was, the next thing on the agenda was county policy for buildings on grandfathering non-conforming lots or not meeting current minimum lot area requirements. Mr. Webb, you got a write-up on that, that is all yours, we're not familiar with that issue?
I don't think I included a, a write-up, but just, as I said in the email, it's really just kind of a, letting everybody know. I know that, until I got here for twenty, thirty, forty years, this was the policy, and I, I first, you know, sort of, said, well, I think we should hold hearings if, if, if it's a lot that doesn't meet the minimum lot size. I have recommended before that it goes before the Board of Zoning Appeals. They've approved every one, based on the, you know, the policy that Ms. Grayson, Mr. Shaffford sort of, you know, had, sort of, you know, formally or informally, had sort of used for many years. So I just kind of tell them, let it be known to the public that, and to everyone here, that if someone comes in with a lot, that we show V and D, that somewhere that was created before January first nineteen seventy-three, prior to zoning, and they can meet all setbacks, then we will approve construction of a single-family home on the lot. And that's what was done for, for many years, and I just kind of came to the realization, it's not a bad policy, because we're approving every one, and the Board of Zoning feels, feels the same.
All right, one last thing, Mr. Webb?
May I ask a question, a couple of questions about this?
Sure.
Do you have any sense of the number of potential lots that would be involved?
Uh, that's a good question. I'd say probably, just looking at the map and doing these hearings, five or six thou, I, oh, well, I'd say ten percent of lots out there are probably at least created before.
So what, ten percent translates into what in America?
I'd say at least a thousand plus. I mean, a lot of them aren't.
Are, are, are you talking about some threshold, obviously, for a grain field?
I mean, you'd have to have, meet sides in agriculture, that fifty foot side setbacks, fifty, uh, twenty-five foot side, fifty fear, fifty feet in the rear, and a hundred feet in front, so you'd have to at least probably be close to half an acre, just to have a buildable spot. So they've approved every one that can prove evidence. I would say you probably at least have the minimum. I mean, you can, you can put a house on some of the drainfield smaller than that, but to meet the setbacks, because we're going to require they still meet setbacks, but they could be deficient in size. You know, if they can't meet setbacks, then they'd have to go get a variance.
All right. Good?
So when you, so if we do this, and it's your authority to approve them, are you going to, hey, you want, so I ride by and I see somebody that's doing it, the other look like, I'll just take on the, maybe others?
Why is my neighbor building a house with a half acre lot?
Right, so you want to publish it, or?
I mean, well.
I think it's published when it comes up to the public.
Right, well.
Now it's going to be slam-bell and done.
Well, we did this, as far as I know, the whole time that Ms. Grayson was here, this was the policy.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, everybody talking at one time?
I, I'm not aware that the county was challenged on it, for the whole time that Ms. Grayson was here, so I, I don't think, you know, that's why I'm kind of just putting on record that that's what will continue. You know, when it comes to grandfather law, there's all sort of cases and lawsuits, is it vested, can you sell it, I mean, all these type of things. There's really no right or wrong answer, in my opinion, but I just think as long as we have a clear policy that you can prove that that lot was created before then, and you can meet setbacks, you can be deficient on lot size.
Okay, any more questions?
One more question. What, what is the, what are the elements of proof of demonstrating the existence of a grandfather law?
It's pretty easy, just go look at the chain of title and see where the plat was and when the plat was recorded. Have a pretty, all the ones that we've heard in the last year, maybe six last year, you know, I can pull the D sub on my computer, write to the first records, plat recorded, January first nineteen sixty-three, you're obviously before.
Didn't you include that explanation in something that you wrote up and passed out recently? How to determine that? At least I read it somewhere.
Uh, I think we talked about it before, but.
Okay. All right. Okay, any more comments, questions? I got, back in February, January, February, we put out a list, I put out a list for the people who were supposed to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting each month. Next first up is Steve Carpenter, and after that it's myself, Mike Fisher, and Steve Carpenter again. So, you on board with that? And there'll be another list made up in January. Same purpose, and purpose of that is for the planning commission member to inform the planning commission of what takes place in the Board of Supervisor meeting, so we can all stay in tune with what's going on. The other comment, in that last little workshop slash meeting we had, had a lot of people talking at one time. Nan's over here trying to take minutes of the meeting, and everybody's talking in different places. It's nearly impossible for her to do that, so I would really appreciate it that these private conversations, or, or different conversations, whatever, be held to a minimum, if not eliminated, and if you have a question, please raise your hand or whatever, and you will be recognized. Otherwise, it's nearly impossible for Nan to take accurate minutes of the meetings. If there are no more comments, questions, or whatever, one more?
Yeah, I'd be happy to take Steve's second, to our duty, since I haven't done one. If you can just let me know, Steve.
Is that all right? All right, Peter?
Thank you.
You're on. Okay, any more comments, whatever, if not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, I would love.
Second? All in favor? Say aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Um, you got three things? Please. Any further questions? What's up?
Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, did we have the public comment section?
Oh, excuse, public comment, or what's public? But everything's going good on the MEO, and anybody else? Do you have anything you want to say this evening?
Oh, come on. I saved you a spot.
Going good? We're doing good, back to, thank you for keeping us straight. Are we in, are we good? What do we want to do?
Move to adjourn.
Let's make a section for the discussion, here's an all-day, 6:00 AM, I, let's, let's go, please.